Wait, that sounds good.
Please note that this meeting will be streamed. Is there any disclosure of the community or interest and general nature there? No? Okay, we're gonna have two public hearings.
Ah, so the first one, notification of the provisions of the North bylaw two zero six eight oh eight, notice of a public hearing. The first request from the Night Cruisers Car Club for exemption to municipal bylaws to permit a car show on Saturday, May twenty fifth, two thousand and eighteen. From eight AM to four PM at the track and field. This includes A, a temporary exemption from municipal bylaw number twelve nineteen ninety six, section fourteen. Being a bylaw to control the use of municipally and recreationally owned property. Fourteen four, no person shall park any vehicle in any park recreational area or municipal property of the town of Estana. Except in those specifically designated by appropriate signs and notices as being areas in which vehicles may be parked. B, temporarily closing the Avery Drive from the complex on through street to traffic with the exception of emergency vehicles on Saturday, May twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen, between the hours of eight AM and four PM. To host the Night Cruiser's Car Show. And C, council authorized temporary exemption from certain provisions of the North bylaw number eleven eighty nine ninety six. On Saturday, May twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen, between the hours of eight AM to four PM for an event being held outdoors at the track and field, the Night Cruiser's Car Show.
And is anybody here wants to speak to this? Okay, I guess not.
Okay, so we get to keep reading. The next one, council of the town of Estana considering requests from the Great Water Trail Adventure Group for an exemption to the overnight camping bylaws. For the use of the track and field area of the recreational complex. A temporary exemption from municipal bylaw twelve nineteen ninety six being a bylaw to provide for the use, regulation, protection, and government of municipally and recreationally owned property. Thirteen point seven remain overnight within the boundaries of any park recreational area and/or municipally owned property without obtaining permission from the municipality.
Anybody like to speak to this? There's no allegations? Question period, any questions? If not, we'll get on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that we want to set a public consent agenda?
Uh, yes, I'd like to set our G three.
G three? That here is one here?
Yes.
G three?
G is not in the consent agenda.
Oh.
Yeah, that's outside the consent. Okay, are we all right Ken?
Yes.
Okay, so. The consent agenda of the resolution here is. Moved by Heather, seconded by Ray. Items A one to F seven inclusive containing part one consent agenda to be adopted. I'm gonna go through and ask if there's any questions as we go through. Anything in A one? B one, there's a little spelling error in there and that should read, the last line should read, as received by corporate service, our community services committee. Yeah, we were talking about part of the community service that flopped and there was a corporate service that I'm gonna have to read. Uh, any? Thing under D one? This is D one and then there's a D. Okay, that's. Under E one. F one reports, public works departmental report. F two, leisure services departmental report. F three, economic development will be report. F four, head of report, report area. F five, Elliott Lake and my river park area. F six, joint and health, joint health and safety meeting. F seven, public health, submarine district. Okay, so if there's nothing there, I'll redo the motion again and we'll move on. Big resolve by item one, A one to F seven inclusive containing part one consent agenda to be adopted. Any questions? Will we do that? Okay, all those in favor? Next motion is. Okay, so I did vote for you, yeah, because we've all. Okay. Big resolve that is recommended by the community service committee that authorizes. Temporary exemption to the municipal bylaw being a bylaw to control the use of municipality and recreationally owned property. No person shall park their vehicle in any park recreational area or on municipal property of the town of Estana. Except in those areas specifically designated by appropriate signs and notices as being. Areas in which vehicles may be parked. Temporary closing the Avery Drive from the complex on to speed to traffic with exemption of emergency vehicles. On Saturday, May twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen, between the hours of eight AM and four PM to host the Night Cruiser's Car Show. A temporary exemption from certain provisions of the North bylaw law number one one eight nine slash ninety six. On Saturday, May twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen, between the hours of eight AM to four PM. For an event being held outdoors at the track and field, the Night Cruiser's Car Show. And that was moved by Heather Malat and seconded by Ray. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor? Moved by Sandra and seconded by Ken. Bylaw authorizes a temporary exemption from the municipal bylaw one two one nine slash ninety six. Being a bylaw to provide for the use, regulation, protection, and governance of the municipality and recreation owned properties. Section thirteen point seven, remain overnight with the boundaries of any park recreational area. And or municipally owned property without obtaining permission from the municipality. For an event being held on the track and field by the Great Waterfront Trail Adventure on July thirty first. From approximately eleven AM to eleven. AM on August first, two thousand and nineteen. So it goes from eleven AM on the thirty first to eleven AM on August first. Any questions or discussion?
Right, I don't believe anybody talked badly about this. I mean, I was looking at it and. It's, I think that's the first time we've ever had this though.
No, it's been in town, it was a few years ago, but it's been in town before.
Was that the one, it was when they dropped the?
The bikes.
Oh, okay.
The big, like all the bicyclers?
Right.
We've had that before, but it was a few years ago.
It was, eh? I think the lawsuit might have been open at that time or something, but I don't believe they spent overnight. Did they?
I don't know that far. I just know they've been here and they spent some time.
Okay. But there, I don't see there's any problem here. Nobody has any problems. I don't, at least doesn't say that they have. So I haven't got a problem with it yet. I just thought we should maybe mention it though. Maybe it will be the first time that they're gonna spend the night. Have to see how that goes.
Yeah. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor? The next item is G three recommendation regarding current supervision. Then we have a motion. Here by Ken and seconded by Sandra. I think it's Sandra.
Yeah, probably.
Uh, big resolve that is recommending, recommended by the recreation. Culture advisory committee that. Leisure services present to council options for program enhancement at Clear Lake Beach for the summer of two thousand and nineteen. The committee is recommending an incremental bill on the success of the two thousand and eighteen program. To include the addition of one or more. Afternoon. Probably say afternoons, change that.
I think it's just one more afternoon.
Or one more afternoon, sorry, yeah, sorry, I missed right there. To include the addition of one more afternoon. The program proposed would run four weeks next July, Monday. To Thursday afternoon, who would run four days a week. And there was also an option of. A consideration if considered five days a week, I recall correctly.
No, I think it was three days.
Well, maybe three to four.
Yeah.
Okay. So, any discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to say something on that. I think it's a good idea to give them that extra day and go for four days as opposed to the three. I think the additional cost was somewhere around twelve hundred dollars. And I think that would be well spent for.
Okay, anybody, any more discussion or questions?
Yes. If the lake was to close, I'm asking, I guess, Cynthia. If the lake, if the lake was to close because of the, well, you know, well, we have the problem. What would happen to this program?
It wouldn't run.
It wouldn't run, but we'd still?
You know, it didn't happen much, I think the last couple days of the program, there was a concern and I think that each one of them closed. Generally for July, it's usually after the warmer temperatures and stuff like that.
That it starts to become a problem, right?
Yeah, so it usually is more.
At near the end of it. Okay. So which one are we talking about? Is it?
More days a week.
Yeah. Okay, you're going with the option A then.
Option B.
Is that right?
Option B is Monday to Thursday, twelve.
And that's the fifty seven hundred dollar one, right? That's all. Thanks.
Is the maintenance for the pool one month? To down for one month? This year, scheduled every year for one? Okay.
I forgot one question. Was there a grant reflected in this last year?
Uh, not too much of a grant, but there was a donation yesterday, a memorial fund.
Oh, yes.
Because it was a special thing. They had done a significant event a year before, so that fund had extra money. So they donated that to pilot project.
Okay.
With the commission of the family, so. Yeah, that's, there's not the additional funding in there this year to support that, so.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'm not so sure that I would support this because we're trying to save money.
Heather and Ken will have to make.
Advocates proceed here. It says here in comments that the administration's position would be to remain at the three day program at this one. Is that because of the cost?
Yeah.
And there's no funding.
We're all to watch. There was three hundred dollars that we have donated. So I'm sure we don't have that, although rather than, no, but I mean, it would be great to offer four days a week.
Alright, self-conscious with it.
Okay, sounds good.
Ken?
Yeah, that's the question I was gonna ask. The recommendation was, no, that was for four days.
Yeah, and that came from the committee.
Yeah, that came from the community, uh, community services committee. Now, like I say, I think it's, it looked like the, the use of the park was getting, you know, there were quite a few people using it on a regular basis. The pools closed for a month in, in July and there isn't maybe a, a good program to turn around and offset the fact that the pools closed. And if we got. I think there was around fifty or sixty kids a day, I can't remember exactly, but somewhere around here that were using the beach at that time, I think it's a lower feeling. Okay, anymore?
I think even though they recommended the three day, that I'm more inclined to lean more towards the four day for the simple reason that. We don't have a lot of things for the youth anymore. We used to have the summer playground program. We don't have that anymore. We need things for them to be due to keep them out of mischief. Once they're running around not having something to do, they get into mischief and get into trouble. And I would rather see them being safe under supervision somewhere than just running around doing other things. And it's a health thing too, they're being healthier.
Can we clarify, didn't the, didn't the community service recommend for?
Yeah, so it was the recreation.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, yeah. So that was the.
So that's what we're really voting on, whether for, and if we wanna vote for three, then we should revise the motion.
Okay, oh, I apologize. I thought I misunderstood what Sid said.
Okay. Any, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, the motion's defeated. Last, is it permissible last question with? I guess it would be. We have a number of votes against the motion. Would you have been considered three at some point or?
Well, it's gonna remain three.
All that.
It's gonna remain three.
Oh, okay, it's remaining, oh, you're right, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I think we're, I probably won't. We have to, that was, that was a trial and error.
Option A stays the same, option B increased today.
Okay, sorry. Okay, the next item here is. Recommendation regarding endorsement of Huntsville Town Council. Be resolved as recommended by the Estana Public Library Board that. Council for the town of Estana endorsed a Huntsville Town Council resolution. Of April twenty third, two thousand and eighteen, in support of continued adequate sustainable provincial funding of Ontario Public Libraries. Increasing annually in line with the consumer pricing. And further that the province commit to adequate and sustained funding for a shared efficient digital library. And further that, according to the resolution, is supporting forward to the Minister of Tourism, Culture, and Sport. To the Minister Municipal Affairs, to our local MTP, to the library, Ontario Library Association. And the Federation of Ontario Public Libraries. And the motion was by Ken and seconded by Sandra. Any discussion?
I do think it's a good idea. I mean. We were speaking of our kids earlier and I, I believe that they could prosper from something like this, kids of all ages. Not just little ones, for everyone. Yes, I'm definitely in favor of this. Thank you.
I'd like to say I was on the library board and, and you would think that switching over to additional library would be cheaper. They're charging a lot more for book when you buy digitally than if you buy a hard copy book. So really, and, and the province has a, an online system that you can, you can. Secure with, I forget what they call it here now, but the book selection wasn't that great. And all the funding grants to libraries remain constant for the last twenty years. Crazy there, okay? And we have lots of people who use the library for internet services. Uh, for, you know, seniors, uh, mercy home and.
Videos.
Videos. And it benefits a lot of people in the community who can't afford, who maybe have their own internet service or maybe. Or develop and even buy a book or something like that.
Yeah. Sure.
Okay, so, anymore, any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so we have some correspondence on library policy, smoking media policy. This information was previously circulated to the council and required faculty to read available municipal office. We've had some correspondence on the infrastructure funding program. Uh, conference and conventions, the Pino annual conference in February. On May eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh. And I don't know.
Not the eleventh, right? I don't think the eleventh, it's the eighth, ninth, I can't.
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, sorry. I read incorrectly, sorry, come on here. I don't know if anybody from council is planning to go. I'm planning to go. I think it's good to go to these things that are close to the community if we can make it. Now, we're the mayor and councilor reporters and now. Ken?
Neither, bye, thank you.
Uh, the only thing I'd like to see is when we were at the seminar in North Bay, one of the items they talked about was. For the clerk and mayor to put together. Uh, an outline of the agendas that would be coming forward in the next six months to a year. And I would like to see something like that brought forward so that if there's an item we would like to see added that would fit in with that agenda, it would give us time to have it added to there.
I think an appropriate thing to bring to corporate services. We're looking at the preceding bylaw, okay, and maybe something that we're incorporating into it.
Good idea, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, maybe I refer to them.
As we're on the, on the corporate service community, so we can, I think that's a bit, a good forum to, to do that.
Okay, sounds good.
Ken?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to attend the AML training. Our counselor training, it was very enlightening. I was able to connect with some people that I hadn't seen in a long time, so that was pretty cool, and then to meet some new people as well. Um, from that, one of the things that I was kind of interested in because it had been bothering me was they did mention a line by line budgeting. And I was curious about it, so I asked both of the instructors individually, who both have many years of experience. Um, this was not something that we needed to do or that fell under the mandate of a counselor. That's what they had indicated to me, so I just wanted to, to put that out there. Um, one of the things that I mentioned when I was running for council was that I believe that there was a division. Amongst council and the managers in, in parts of the town, and I'm a little bit concerned about that still. I'm still seeing a bit of a division and I'm, I'm hoping we can do something to maybe resolve some of those issues. I don't know what it is, but I'm hoping. I also had to bring it forward and I was hoping somebody was going to put forth a motion to reconsider. Was that when I went out after last meeting, even though I wasn't here, I had several people approach me. And I mean by several, I mean five different people on different occasions asking me about the baskets. And they indicated to me, all of them, that they felt that it was something that the town shouldn't invest in. That they appreciated being able to see that, that it invited people in, it made them feel welcome, and that people wanted to move and relocate here. And they couldn't understand why council wouldn't do it. I couldn't speak for council, I wasn't here, so I was able to listen and I offered, they said they wanted me to bring it forward and I said that I would definitely do that. And I was also impressed with the letter from the local real estate agent indicating that they felt that it was something that we should reconsider as well.
Okay, thank you. So. I've got a few items, okay? Federal government is. Providing an extra, our community an extra three, roughly three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's like the gas tax place over. Where we get around three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year and that carries a little bit year to year. And there's one extra thing a year kicked in this year. And that is for infrastructure, but it's really, we have to understand what that is and what we can spend the money on, but I think it's mainly roles.
Um, no, there's some other.
Okay. The other thing is the provincial government has given us an extra six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. And that's, that's a grant to improve efficiency and service delivery. And we're trying to, I'm trying to get some more information on sorts of, okay? But that has a bearing on our budget and where we're, what we might wanna stand off, okay? Uh, but the, that money is. It mainly has to be focused on trying to improve service delivery and efficiency. Uh, that may come into improving the town website, for example. Maybe an economic development. Thing or, I really don't know. We have more, more to learn about that, but there's some. But there's something there that we might be able to use, okay? The money's coming to us, but there's some strings as to how we can spread. We now know that the, on the budget end and things, we sort of, I put things on a hold a little bit there because. Uh, we weren't sure what was gonna happen to some of the funding, so it's a good thing because we've got some of these other. This other money here, which we can make decisions to roll into the budget, okay? Uh, where, where appropriate. And we also know that the province, the OMPF grant that we've been seeing decrease every year, the decrease for this year was considerably less than the other years. So that's a little, a little more money in our pocket, which is gonna help us a little bit when it comes to the budget. I, I'd like, I'd sort of ask Cynthia there. That we have a little bit of an education program that needs to be, and maybe what to mean for our community, okay? I'd like to at least get some agreement that, that we, we, we press out of staff and, and. So we have a better understanding of, of what these grants mean to us, maybe what projects in the, in the community we might wanna utilize for. Is that, is that, say we have a consensus to do that?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Everybody else agree?
Yeah.
Okay? I was just wondering about. There's also, I just saw today that there was a, a Fall Canyon from Australia. He's an Australian person. And he, I attended a seminar, a little session that he held at the Roma Conference this year. And it was very, very good. And he's gonna be talking in Elliott Lake on April the fifth. I think everybody got a copy of that. It's fifty dollars to attend. It's a. Goes from ten AM to three PM. And I think it would be a very, very good thing if a number of us could get up to see that. It, it really involves mobilizing communities, okay, and really enhancing ways to enhance community involvement in the decision making and economic development. It might give us some ideas because I think we really have to look at our strategic plan and, and. Uh, it might give us some ideas, uh, because I think we really have to look at our strategic plan and, and look at how we can engage the community. So I think, uh, Tracy sent that out this afternoon and asked anybody's interest. And I've personally heard of the spot, okay? It's quite an interesting proposition, you describe that. Uh, a few things that happened in Australia in small communities, but, yeah, I thought it was very useful. That was in a maybe one hour session, and now talking maybe four hours of info. And the last item there was, I wonder, uh, for economic development corporation, so do you have any information where that goes? Do we have a public, uh, question?
I think, yeah, so they have until the twenty seventh, Tuesday.
Okay.
The Economic Development Committee, they had them, the open house last week, or is it this week? I don't know, it wasn't that long ago. They had an afternoon session and an evening session and we were all invited to be there.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so I now have a motion to adjourn by Sandra and Ken. Be resolved that the regular meeting of council was hereby adjourned at seven thirty. All those in favor?